Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. Before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to invite David Slidderup from Grace First Presbyterian. Sorry to interrupt you, gentlemen. Thanks for being here this evening. Would you lead us in invocation, please?
Let's pray. Gracious God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunities that we have to enjoy what you created for us. God, we just ask that you be with those who are, don't have air conditioning or don't have a place to cool off. We pray that you would be with them and comfort them in this time of heat. Lord, we ask that you be with his council as they continue to lead and guide the city of Weatherford. We pray blessings upon them and their work that they will do this evening. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks for being here, sir. We appreciate it. This time it's 6:31 PM. We'll call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. We have all council members here this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Be led this evening by Councilman Tiscus.
Please join me in standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hothab, do you have anything tonight, sir?
I do have a few items to talk about. So, the first one is a staff promotion. So, Ms. Dawn Brooks has been with us the past two years and has been the interim finance director since March. Happy to report to all the council members and all of our citizens' businesses that she is officially our new finance director. So, she comes to us with 20 years' experience, strong governmental accounting background, and exceptional leadership skills, and so extremely happy about that. So, congratulations, Dawn. A couple other items. So, you know, our police officers wear a lot of hats, and this Thursday, they're actually going to wear one that's a little bit different. So, it's a pretty cool event. Texas Roadhouse is having a fundraiser for Special Olympics of Texas. And so, our police officers will be helping assist serving food. So, they won't officially be waiters, but they'll be helping deliver food and take care of stuff for all the folks, patrons at Texas Roadhouse this Thursday, July 29th, from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock. So, definitely encourage everybody to stop.
They're not cooking, right? Let's just make sure that's true.
They are not cooking. Yeah, they're not cooking. So, and the last thing to talk about is July is Parks and Recreation Month. And of course, we've got an exceptional Parks and Recreation staff. And, you know, they put on a lot of community-oriented events for us here in the city of Weatherford. They put on our Holiday in the Park event, put on several movies in the park across the summer. They put on the concert events that happened in the summer, too. They put on those extremely popular food, park lounge nights, which is where they bring the food trucks in. And of course, just kind of the pinnacle event that we just recently had, Spark in the Park. All those are in addition to the things they do, like the adult softball leagues. Of course, they run and operate the pool. They schedule all of our community buildings, six park pavilions, five official baseball fields. They coordinate first Monday. They maintain over 856 acres of parkland for 13 different parks. And they do all that with just 25 full-time employees, eight part-time employees, and then 30 seasonal pool and camp staff. And I have to tell you, when you see those folks every day when they come in, they have a smile on their face because they enjoy their job and they enjoy providing that to the citizens of Weatherford. So, just recognizing them for Parks and Recreation Month.
Fantastic. I think we all know, council and our citizens and staff, nobody has parks like Weatherford. And so, we're just super thankful for them. It's one of the things that makes us a super strong community. So, thank you, sir.
And we did also have the opportunity to be featured on Channel 11 here recently. The Parks Director Shannon Goodman was featured on Channel 11 on a live update for our newest park, which is the boardwalk out at Lake Weatherford. And so, they featured that. It's actually the longest continuous boardwalk in the United States. So, it's pretty cool.
Awesome. Fantastic. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Council, anything? Items of community interest? Anybody? Well, let's move on to item five, which is consent agenda items. We do have five A through five Q. Council, we are going to need to pull five I and hear that individually. And on five Q, the last item, be advised that the new ordinance, which does have small grammatical changes in it, is in front of you for your view. And you've had an opportunity to look at that, but I did want to clear that up. And so, council, if it's your pleasure to entertain five I through, excuse me, five A through five Q, with the exception of five I, that entertain that motion if that's what you'd like to do. Your motion is for five?
Yes, sir.
Everything except five I, right?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem something?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on any of those before we call for a vote? All right, let's take a vote on those items. Please indicate yea or nay. It's passed unanimously, five zero. Just for clarification, that was five A through five Q, with the exception of five I, which we'll hear at this time. Five I is considered adoption of ordinance O-2021-19 to close, vacate, and abandon a portion of Oldham Avenue in the Milken Heights Edition to the city of Weatherford and authorize the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed to the adjacent landowners.
I'd like to recuse myself from that item.
Councilman Cleveland's publicly stated he's recusing himself from the item. Counsel, is there discussion on this item? Entertain a motion if that's your pleasure on five I. Motion by Jeff Robinson, second by Councilman Tiscus. Any discussion on this item before we call for a vote? Let's vote on five I. Please indicate yea or nay. It passes with four yays and one recusal. Item six on the agenda is public hearings. Six A is to hold a public hearing on proposed voluntary annexation of Ranch Lake Estates, being 10.81 acres situated in the J.L. Edwards survey, abstract number 416, Parker County, Texas, being a portion of that certain tract of land described indeed to Wilson Ranch and Development LLC, recorded in instrument number 202025436, Official Public Records, Parker County, Texas, and being a portion of the existing right-of-way of White Settlement Road. Mr. Kettner, welcome, sir.
Mayor and council, you have the complete information in your packet in regards to this request for annexation, request from Chuck Stark concerning the Ranch Lake Mission proposed subdivision adjacent to the White Settlement Road. The first of the two required public hearings. The second public hearing scheduled is at 11:00 AM on Thursday, July 29th, 2021. And the notices have been sent as was required. And I'd like to answer any questions that you may have after the public hearing.
Any questions for staff before we have the public hearing?
I have one.
Mayor Protem.
That sits directly in front of the downslope of where water runs off from Lake Weatherford. And when we have high-volume water in the lake, that becomes pretty, I mean, it goes pretty far and wide there. What, I'm assuming they're wanting a voluntary annexation so that they can develop this piece of property. What effect does the, it sits in the floodplain, but also that it, that the water runoff runs right in across White Settlement Road to that area directly in front of this particular strip of land?
Okay, so, the action in front of you is just for the annexation, but as far as the development process, they will need to go through the plating process, which we will review in detail their stormwater plans and their plans as far as drainage and any existing conditions that may be there. And I would defer everything else to our city engineer to answer any further details in regards to that.
Bill Smith, city engineer, and like Caleb mentioned, we'll do a detailed review once they get that process going as far as their site development. I believe they also have to do a rezoning as well to accommodate single-family residential. So, you'll see this again through the zoning and through the plating process. And after that, or during that process, we'll be reviewing their site development permit plans to make sure that they address any drainage issues that may occur, including adherence to our floodplain development ordinance.
I, you know, the reason I ask that is because I've actually gone through this myself and would not have voluntarily annexed my property in had I known, you know, that there was going to be a water issue. So, I'm asking for their sake, as well as my own knowledge, that I do know that when that, the water is high, it goes right directly into that area, and I see it going over the banks of that area. So, I was just wanting to make sure that they were aware of it and whether they really wanted to annex this or not.
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am. We'll definitely keep an eye on that.
Any other questions on six A before we have our public hearing? All right, this time we'll have a public hearing on six A. Anybody that'd like to speak specifically on this item, please come forward this time, six A. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on six A. There's no action required on this item at this time. Council will go to six B, which is to hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O-2021-37, request a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from AG Agricultural to C2 Interstate Commercial for a convenience store and fuel station on a 3.0437 acre tract of, at the northeast corner of the intersection of Interstate I-20 and Rick Williamson Memorial Highway. Said track being situated in the Clarence A. Lovejoy survey, abstract number 837, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2021-0007. Welcome back, sir.
This request, you have the complete staff report in your packet. The request went before the, was reviewed by staff, and staff recommends approval of the zoning change request. And at the July 14th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved five zero unanimously of those present, the zone change amendment. Stated this is located at the intersection of Interstate I-20 and Rick Williams, and their intent is to put in a convenience store, fueling station, for vehicles only, no trucks.
No trucks and no travel center.
Yeah, not a travel center or a truck stop.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner on six B? We do have to have a public hearing. We can circle back around if we want to afterwards. Okay.
If I may, just also to clarify, the drawing that you see on the screen, and there is strictly just a concept plan, it still has to go through all the approval processes. And so, that is subject to change as it goes through the city.
So, what things would be open for consideration at that time?
Yes.
What things would be open for that? Anything could be open for consideration?
Everything located on that site plan that you see right there, the entrances, the light, the improvements on Brock, Old Brock Road as well, improvements on Rick Williamson.
Counsel, are we ready to have a public hearing on six B? Let me get to the right screen here. This time we'll open a public hearing on six B. If there's anybody that'd like to speak specifically on this item, please come forward this time, six B. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on six B, council. There is, there is action required on this. We do have a motion for approval by Councilman Cleveland, second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on six B before we take a vote? Seeing none, let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay on six B. Passes five zero. We'll move down to six C. Hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O-2021-39, a request by Robert and Janet Anderson for a zoning amendment to the SF 7.5P, single-family residential with a planned unit development overlay at the lot located at 317 West Owen Street, being a 4.257 acres out of the PS Hall survey, abstract number 659, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2021-0005. Welcome back, Mr. Kettner.
Mayor and council, you have the complete staff report in your packet for the record, and it closes and gives the staff recommendation, which is approval of this chain SF 7.5 planned residential subdivision. The owner reduced the number of lots that they were requesting, and that's what's requiring this to come back before you with that modification. And at the July 14th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was unanimously approved of all five planning and zoning commissioners that were present at that.
Very well. Questions for staff before we have our public hearing on six C? All right, we're going to have a public hearing on six C at this time. Anybody from the forward that'd like to speak specifically on this item, please come forward this time, six C. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion on this before we entertain the motions? Do you have a motion by the mayor pro tem for approval? Second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on six C before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay on six C. That passes five zero. Six D on the agenda is to hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O-2021-40, a request for zoning district amendment to the PD for Oxford at Weatherford, a planned development for a mixed-use project, being an 18.262 acre tract of land, and being a replat of lots one and three, block three, Alford addition, Alford addition, phase two, in addition to the city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2021-0006. Mr. Kettner.
Mayor and council, you have it before you, the complete staff report and packet for this. This also is a planned development that is requesting modification. I believe this is the fourth time that this has come before for approval. You have the complete staff report in your packet. As noted in the staff report, staff does find the proposed development consistent with the character and surrounding neighborhood and the commercial aspect is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds that there's no change to the parking ratio, landscaping, commercial lots, density, and amenities leaving the question of, is the change in the height, building location, and urban design more appropriate for this PD than what was approved previously? And as you can see on the plans, the layout has changed, and as noted in the staff report, the buildings that are located in the front were moved a little closer. The materials are changed on the, and the elevation overall heights of the structures were modified from what was existing to what is proposed. Also noted in that, you have the different changes, as well as the garages that are located on the facility. In the previous plan, majority of the garages were either part of or are masonry structures. And so, there's been a slight modification to that, as you can see, located on the plans. As you're aware, that there has been some changes to the state law requirements on material-wise, but also, as noted, the fence that goes around the property as well is not fall under that requirement, state requirements, and modifications can be made to that. It is shown as a wrought iron masonry and wood combination fence, but that could be modified if that is your desire. And staff is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner before we have a public hearing? I think I have a couple, and if these are applicant things they need answered, then just let, they come up here at the public hearing. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask. The garages are detached from the main structure now, right?
Yes, they're, in the previous plans, some of those garages were part of the internal system and part of it.
Right.
Most of these garages are all, are detached.
Okay. That doesn't really raise a question with me. The part of it that does, when I studied in detail, is that the primary structure is all of materials that are non-wood, longer-lasting, less maintenance. But when I studied the exterior of the garage, it was all wood, and which is different, not only in location, the garages are different, but in construction materials. Now, I'm not a contractor, but it appears that the quality of those is substantially different than they were in the previous submission or two that we've seen, unless I'm mistaken.
I would agree with that.
Okay. The picture that it shows is that it shows only wrought iron. So, can you clarify, or maybe the applicant can, where is the wood fencing proposed? And how does a wood fence with masonry columns every 50 feet look? And then, how does that last long-term?
I would defer that question to the applicant as well.
But would you agree that the picture does show an all wrought iron fence?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public hearing? Great. We'll open up a public hearing on six D at this time. If there's anybody here that would like to speak specifically on this item, please come forward at this time, six D. Yes, sir. Come forward. How are you?
I'm the applicant.
Okay, let's wait till you get up here, and if you can have your name, once you get settled, we can have your name and your address.
Justin Schwartz, 8411 Preston Road, Dallas.
Justin, do you have a presentation for us, or are you here to answer questions?
I don't, I'm the applicant, so.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
No problem.
And council, any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Can you talk a little bit about the garages? They've been removed from the main structures.
Yeah, in the last iteration, we had them removed.
Let me finish my question if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, of course.
They've been removed from the primary structure. And I believe the last two renditions have shown that to be attached, but they're showing to be all of wood material now. And so, why does that material been changed, and why does that not align with the primary structures?
Well, so, just to clarify, in the last iteration, we had detached garages.
Okay. I stand corrected.
No, no, no problem.
Let's talk wood versus masonry.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I'll have to check in terms of what the material shown was last time. It's very common to use hardy, hardy board wood on the garages. It's a more cost-effective way of building them, but, you know, our buildings are likely going to be stucco, and the garages will likely be hardy. I mean, it's a very nice look. It's a clean look. It's what we have at all of our properties. I can't recall what was shown last time, but I can't imagine that it was any different because we made no changes in materials. The only change we made, quite frankly, was changing the one building up front in the clubhouse.
Right.
We didn't change the units. We didn't change the parking count. We made very, very few changes. Our goal was not to have to come back, you know, through city council and P&amp;Z, but staff felt that it was necessary.
Sure, and we do, too. So, do you describe in the drawings that are provided, it says lap siding, so are you telling us that that is a hardy plank material, a masonry product, or is it a wood product?
It's, I'll need to confirm with the architect and contractor in terms of the actual material, but it's what we build every one of our projects and every one of our garages with. And I bet 99% of the apartment communities in the greater Texas area are built the same way.
Okay, and that same way is a hardy plank type material? Is it a wood product?
I believe the hardy.
Okay, okay. Go ahead and start talking.
Well, I was just going to clarify, Justin. So, on the last previously approved ordinance, it did show a brick wainscoting, stucco, and then it specifically called out the hardy product as opposed to just mentioning lap siding, which there's variations in quality of lap siding. That's probably the reason for part of the question.
I appreciate it, and I will defer to our contractor.
Since you had estimated, I forgot the quantification you gave. Is it 90-something percent of your projects, 99 or 98 of them are made with a hardy plank or a masonry type? Is that something that you'd be willing to agree to, an amendment in the proposed PD, since that's something that you do 90-plus percent of the time?
Again, I would like to clarify, because I know there's sometimes some confusion in terminology in building materials, so I would like to clarify with our architect and our contractor.
Okay.
That would be okay.
Mr. Cleveland, you're a...
I'm irritated by this one, I'm going to be honest with you.
You're in this field, and I need you to help me get this sorted because I'm sensing many consistencies in verbal and written explanations of materials.
My frustration with this one has been it just continues to be brought back, and every time it becomes a loop, the product gets worse and worse. And it doesn't get built, and then we come back and we produce something that's a little bit less. It's death by a thousand cuts for me. It just keeps seeing it, and we keep taking stuff away from it. And at some point in time, we have to stop allowing it to be taken away and say, hey, we proposed something, we accepted it, let's build it. Every time it's been presented to us, the argument has been cost. I know there's a lot of conversation that's happened up here since I've been up here that cost is not supposed to be the driving factor necessarily in what dictates our ordinances. And I think we've been very lenient and slowly given up. To your point directly, there is a difference between wood lap siding and a concrete-based product. It doesn't necessarily have to be the name, hardy plank, but there is a difference between a mason-type product that's made of concrete fibers versus a wood lap siding.
Can I respond to that?
Excuse me?
Am I allowed to respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say that we actually upgraded the product from when we went here last time. The previous versions of why this was presented to you, I explained this last time, we purchased the property, we're long-term holders, we want to build the optimal structure. This version is actually more expensive than what was approved last time because last time it was all three-story buildings. We now have a four-story buildings, which means we have to add elevators. And the reason we did that is because we wanted, we switched architects because we weren't happy with what we had last time. And we said we want a four-story building with more pool views and more of a wow factor community feel. So, just in response to your comment, this is actually a superior product. It's a more expensive product, and this is what we plan on building. We're not changing it. We're not trying to cut corners. We're actually spending more money because we want to be here long-term. We don't sell anything. We're long-term owners, and we're very excited about building this product here in Weatherford.
Explain to me how spending more money means that it's a superior product for the consumers and for our community.
I don't believe that. I don't believe that at all. I'm just saying that we wanted to build the perfect design for us, that we feel will be, make residents the happiest, will bring the most wow factor to Weatherford.
Right.
And if it costs us more money to do that, we want to build the perfect product. That's what we're here to do, and we feel that this is it.
Okay, I had another question related to the fencing. The elevations that we see show wrought iron fencing in every picture that's there, but it appears in the PD there is also some discussion of a 50-foot space, masonry column, joined by a wood fencing product, which I'm concerned about, short and long-term. And I think we're, as we look at the multifamily options, we're trying to make long-term decisions that are solid. So, what percentage can we expect of that, that you'll be willing to commit to? What areas would that be in? And would those be commitments that you'd be willing to make in the PD?
I would defer. I'm not sure what the requirements are currently. Hi, I'm Jake Hammond with Baird, Hamlin &amp; Brown. I can try to answer some of your questions.
Say your name one more time on the mic, I'm sorry.
Jake Hammond.
Hey, Jake.
The screening fences, I apologize, I'm not a, not the expert on the screening requirements, but I believe the wood fences are an approved screening material? Correct?
They are approved, they are an approved screening material, but this is a planned development, and so we do have the autonomy to have a discussion about it and have specific requirements for that.
Right.
So, the reason my question is raised is because it shows one thing in the pictures. When I read the fine print, the smaller print in the PD, it states that it's going to be a 50-foot wood span separated by masonry columns. And again, that's different than what we showed in the picture, and that raises some concern with me.
Okay. As far as the exact layouts of, you want to maximize the amount of wrought iron fencing, correct? That feels, that would look more aesthetically pleasing?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that I want to or don't want to. What I'm trying to do is explain why there's a difference in what we see and what's being presented. And I have questions about the long-term sustainability visually and structurally of that wood fence we've seen in other areas of our city where that's been allowed in previous times, and it just doesn't look good long-term. And we're trying to, not only make this property quality, but also quality for those that are visiting our community, that drive around it long-term, or that develop in other areas adjacent to or in that area. And so, that's why the question is being posed.
Okay. I can, I can, at several of our other properties that we built recently, we built predominantly wrought iron fence. I agree with your comments about sustainability and aesthetics. In terms of me committing to a percentage today, it's difficult for me to do that, but our intent is to build a wrought iron fence around our community.
I agree with you. The wooden fences are not sustainable long-term. They break down, they're...
Those are the only two questions that I have. Counsel, any others?
No, those are, those are good questions. I think the important thing to understand is we've got an already-accepted PD, and so someone's asking that we change the PD, and that changes the makeup of what we're doing because it's, you know, we have something that we've already agreed on. we have something that we've already agreed on. You have to make us understand why this PD is better than what we've already put in place. I guess, it's not like we're starting with something that we're trying to create a PD from scratch. We're making changes. So I guess what we're really asking you to do is explain how you've made the PD better and not taken away from it.
You, you said, and I'm paraphrasing, that this is a superior product.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't doubt that. I, I don't have the, the plans to say yea or nay. But I, other than adding elevators because of height and some other things, why, why is this a better PD for our citizens and for your customers than the one before?
Well, because if you go back to one of the, the site plan view, if it's possible to do that. Yes, that one right there. So what we've changed bef, what we had before was essentially all those orange buildings scattered throughout the site. What residents like and what enhances a community feel is people being around the gym, around the pool, having pool views. We find at every one of our communities, people are willing to pay a premium and want to be around the pool. It has a greater sense of community and that's what we're all about. And that's what we want to bring to Weatherford. So what we weren't happy with in the last PD is that we had two separate buildings and only approximately ten units actually had pool views. So we changed the architects and said, this just doesn't feel like an Oxford community. That's what we believe in. We're, we're big on amenities. As I said previously, we don't sell anything that we, that we build or that we acquire. We're a small family business. And we feel that having a large central building, as we have there, which is the change, the purple there, will enhance the community feel for our older residents. We like the fact that they now have an option to have elevators. And it's just offers a lot more units that have pool views and can live around that center of community, which is where we have barbecues, we have pool, we have community functions. Um, it's close to the dog park. That's the reason we wanted to make the change. As I said, it's, it's not about money, which is the point you brought up earlier. It is going to cost us more money, but we believe that the investment is worth it and that the change is worth it, quite frankly. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here.
I guess though, is this, is this a new revelation that you've had about the design setup? Because why didn't we see this, I guess, why, why wasn't it designed this way a year ago? Because you build these in other places, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if that's how you like to build them, why didn't we see that a year ago?
The, the, the reason we did that last time is because we worked with an architecture firm that we'd used in the past.
Right, I got that.
And a lot of the folks had changed and they produced something. And we knew that the process would be timely in terms of going through the approval process. So at the time, we said, okay, this is what we want to do. We recently acquired the property, we acquired the, um, commercial property up front as well. And we presented it to you. But, as I said, we want to be two feet, two feet in a hundred percent. We don't sell, we take a lot of pride in what we do. And something about it just didn't feel right. And we had more and more meetings with the architect and quite frankly, it's a, it's a very fair point. We should not have brought that in last time. But this is, this is it. I mean, this is what we want to build, we're, we're ready to go, we're excited about it. I, I can assure you, no more changes. Um, as soon as we get our, our financing approved, which is in process, we'll pull a permit and, and, I mean, we'd like to start building tomorrow if we could, quite frankly.
Okay.
We, we don't have, we don't have any partners in this deal. Um, it's a hundred percent our company. Uh, we're excited to, to break ground and, and get this project underway, we really are.
Right. You, you'd asked for the opportunity to clarify with your contractor, I believe, on the construction materials of the detached garages, if you will, and also the exterior fencing. What do you need to do that and how much time? Or is that something as, uh, what's your role in the project? Buyer, are you?
The, the developer.
Okay. As a developer, to be quite frank, I would think that you, you would have an understanding of, if, and the autonomy to make that decision.
Yes.
And to potentially make, uh, that an option you would entertain in the PD if you needed it or wanted it approved tonight for exterior materials on that detached garages that are of product that Mr. Cleveland, I'll probably ask you to describe. And then fencing, that's a little bit more clarified in where, what, and, and et cetera, et cetera.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And perhaps as the city? Do we know what materials were?
If you'll direct the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to call staff up, we'll call them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what approvals were, uh, what materials were approved in the last garages for the last submission?
So those were a brick wainscoting and stucco.
For the garages?
Yes.
Okay.
The garages you're asking for today are a different material than the ones before. That's why I posed the question of, uh, why the change? And you'd stated that over ninety-five percent of your properties are of that masonry product. So I just, I'm not understanding the, the change in that. And I'm not getting the feeling from you that you're willing to commit to using that consistent material.
I am, I am, I am willing to commit to that.
Okay, you are willing to commit to that. So what about fencing? Let's talk about.
I'm willing to commit to the wrought iron as well, because I believe it's a su- superior product. That's what we're looking to build. And I, that's what we put up. So I was quite surprised, quite frankly, about the wood fencing. So that was confusion, but I am willing to.
Counsel, any other discussion or questions? So what I'm hearing from the applicant, if, in the event that you decide to take action, is that he is agreeing to a masonry product on the exterior of the detached garages? And also to, uh, wrought iron fencing, uh, around the entire property? Uh, is that, you're agreeing to, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, you're not being forced to do that? It's totally, you're willing to do that, it's agreeable to you? You're not being, anything else? You okay with this?
I understand and I agree.
Okay, perfect. So counsel, if that's your pleasure to consider action, if there are no other questions, we will have to close the public hearing. And I need to see if anybody else wants to speak on this item first. But if that's your pleasure, the applicant, the developer has agreed to those two items, uh, on the record. So gentlemen, any other comments? Okay. Thank you so much for being here today.
Yes.
If we have any follow-up questions, we'll call you up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the floor that'd like to speak on six D? Six David, public hearing still open. Hearing none, we'll close it at this time. Counsel, discussion on six D, I'm sorry for my questions.
Questions?
Mr. Robinson, anything?
No, I was just prepared to make a motion.
Sir.
I, I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, adopt the ordinance, um, for the zoning district amendment to the PD with the verbally agreed-upon, uh, changes to the, the fence material and the garage materials.
Mr. Zellers, uh, there's a motion on the floor, is that stated correctly? Uh, we're, we're okay there?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson, thank you for the motion. Uh, counsel, is there a second on this motion?
We'll second.
Councilman Cleveland, do you second the motion with the same items that Mr. Robinson stated? Any discussion on six D, six David, before we call for a vote?
So, so just to clarify that, your motion was that the garage will be made of some masonry product and it'll be wrought iron fence around the entire property.
Correct.
Is that correct?
The motion that the garages will be all masonry and no wood?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Kettner, are we good here? Mr. Zellers, any clarification needed for you, sir? Alrighty. Any other discussion on six D? Hearing none, let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay on six D. That passes five zero. Six E, hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O two zero two one dash four one. A request for zoning ma, map amendment to change the zoning from A G agricultural to R E residential state for single-family residential home sites being approximately one hundred and thirteen point seven eight three acres. Situated in and being a portion of the J.J. Bradford survey, abstract number one nine three one and the T. Jackson survey, abstract number seven forty-five. J. Woosley survey, abstract number one six four one and the T. R. Railroad Company survey, section number ninety-nine, abstract number one four three six, Parker County, Texas. Mr. Kettner.
Mayor and counsel, this is a, uh, a request for the rezoning of this property to continue on with the, uh, residential development that has begun on this property, um, early on. And this went before the planning commission. You have the complete staff report in your packet. At their, uh, staff recommended approval of this zone change as requested. And at the July fourteenth meeting, the planning and zoning commission approved unanimously with all five present, uh, to recommend approval of this rezoning change as well.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner before we have our public hearing on six E? Thank you, sir. Let's have a public hearing on six E. Anybody that'd like to speak on six E specifically, please come forward at this time. Good evening, sir, thanks for your patience with us. Once you get settled, if I can have your name and address, you'll be given three minutes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and counsel, my name is Otis Lee, Barrett Hampton Brown, nine forty-nine Hilltop Drive, Weatherford, Texas. Here representing Castlemont Homes and Richard Green, who's the owner and developer of the property. Um, as Mr. Kettner said, this property, one hundred and thirteen acres, uh, recently had a portion of that was annexed um, by the council. And this property does have a development agreement and has been approved by the utility board, both for water service and a development agreement for the one acre, three-quarter acre lots. Um, and we are requesting this to be, uh, rezoned as R E from agriculture now. And other than that, we're available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Lee, counsel? Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else, uh, want to speak on six E? Public hearing is open. This time we'll close the, uh, public hearing on six E. And I would encourage counsel, if you've not driven out to Wausau Ranch, they have started construction. Beautiful homes, uh, very well laid out and done. And the developers done everything that I think they've said that they did a long way. It's very refreshing. Any discussion further on six E? Entertaining a motion, if that's your pleasure. Motion for approval by Mr. Cleveland, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion before we call for a vote on six E? Let's vote on it, six E. Six E, if you'll indicate yea or nay at this time. That passes five zero. Six F is to hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O two zero two one dash three eight. A request for conditional use permit approval for a bed and breakfast and accessory event facility at eight oh eight South Lamar Street, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP two zero two one dash zero 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 five. Mr. Kettner, I think this may be, no, it's not your last time, though, we're getting close.
Uh, yes.
You have the floor, sir.
This is a conditional use permit request that, uh, for bed and breakfast, uh, located at eight oh eight South Lamar Street. You have the complete staff report in your packet. As a conditional use permit request, um, for this location, this went before the, uh, planning commission and staff recommended, um, seven, uh, conditions, uh, be placed on this request. Um, this went before the planning commission. Uh, they concurred with the seven conditions that were placed, um, on this conditional use permit listed in the staff reports, items, uh, one through seven. And, uh, they approved this recommended unanimously, uh, with all five present to approve the conditional use permit with the seven, uh, conditions that are listed in the staff report. I could go over those in detail, they are listed in the packet.
Those items were listed in your packet, counsel. Would you like Mr. Kettner to review them in detail? Stand by for questions or any questions for him before we have our public hearing. Okay? Thank you, sir, stand by, if you don't mind. This time we'll have a public hearing on item six F. We do have two speaker cards. And then after those two, we will call from the floor for individual speakers. Uh, first speaker tonight is Laura Sloan. Laura, are you still with us tonight? How are you? Come on up, ma'am. Thanks for your patience. Laura, once you, uh, get settled up there, if we can have your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Laura Sloan, my current address is forty thirteen Thornhill Way in Relent, Texas, seven five oh eight eight.
Welcome.
I'm currently under contract for this property.
Okay.
I am, thank you for your time, by the way. Um, this has been a dream of mine for, I won't be so long-winded, I promise. I'm usually really long-winded, but this has been a dream for a long time. I've had thirty years of asset management in multimillion-dollar properties. And when this link just kind of popped up one day on the computer, my husband and I says, that's it. That's home, we've been trying to get to Weatherford for years. And, um, so we looked at it as a piece of history. It's eighteen ninety-seven. We're going to restore the property. And, um, from parking to the interior and the, the exterior as well. So, uh, we're very excited about it. We're hoping to get approval, we will be running it as a bed and breakfast, um, mostly on the weekends. Um, and as far as small weddings, I don't want to get anybody upset in the neighborhood. My husband's a doctor, so he has to get up early in the morning to go to work. So we're not, we can't be up, you know, until midnight doing things, so. Um, very excited, I just, I hope that y'all give us a chance to come into Weatherford and restore this historic gem of a property. And I think that the current owners are more than happy to pass the torch on to us and we'll make you proud.
Any questions for Ms. Sloan? Ms. Sloan, you're aware of the seven items in the recommendation?
Yes, sir, very much so.
If that's approved tonight by the council, you'd be willing to fulfill all of those in entirety? And your questions have been answered on those and everything, you're good to go if we get it approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments from Ms. Sloan? Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Welcome to Weatherford. Our next speaker card is Dan Bootloff? Dan, did I pronounce it right?
For eighty-two years, I've been called everything.
Did I even get close?
So that's, that's good enough. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Dan, if I can.
Dan Utoff, eight oh eight South Lamar, the current owner of that property.
And Dan, you're going to have three minutes, sir, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Twenty-nine years we've owned, uh, the property. Uh, twenty-eight years ago, we stood before this, not you all, committee and, uh, went through the bed and breakfast, uh, process. In that, um, positive response, we, uh, had fourteen years as a very good bed and breakfast. We had over, over fifteen thousand house guests in terms, uh, of, uh, the bed and breakfast business. That's beds and heads, of which we, uh, had at least half that, if not more, for parties, weddings, the same kind of events that, uh, the Sloans are, um, asking for. During that period of time of fourteen years, uh, we collected, uh, the hotel motel taxes of over seventy-two thousand dollars, of which Weatherford got their fair share and of course the county. Um, all I can say is that during that fourteen-year period, we never had any problems with, uh, the neighbors. The neighbors never told us any problems, nor did we have any parking problems, which was raised during the P and C, uh, board meeting. All I can say is, she's a grand old lady, a hundred and twenty-four years old. Probably the, um, oldest, or almost the oldest and probably the best example of a Victorian house here in Weatherford. We have several, don't get me wrong, but as far as a big house, has a ballroom on the second floor. I don't recognize any of the other than Mr. Zellers, who lives just a block over down the hill.
Speaking of neighbors, huh?
Well, you can't always, you know, choose your neighbors. But, um, all I'm saying is that, uh, we've had, you know, it's part of Weatherford. We should continue to make it even bigger and better, which the Sloans have, uh, programmed to do. So, uh, I say we should approve it on my behalf.
Mr. Dan, I'm going to call you Mr. Dan, so I don't mess it up again.
Um, by the way, uh, when I'm in a doctor's office and a nurse comes out for me, they always say, Mr. Dan.
Mr. Dan, that's what I'm going to call you from now on. Mr. Dan, thank you for being here. Uh, is there anybody else on the floor that'd like to speak on six F? Six F? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on that. Counsel, any discussion, comments? A motion for approval presented by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, excuse me, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion before we vote on it? Six F, let's take a vote. Please indicate yea or nay on that. And that passes five zero. Item seven on the agenda, it's regular agenda items. Seven A is consider request for preliminary plat, approval for the two-lot Sethco addition, seven point two nine two five acres at the intersection of Interstate twenty and Rick Williamson Memorial Highway and situated in the Clarence A. Lovejoy survey, abstract number eight thirty-seven, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two one dash zero zero four four. Mr. Kettner.
Right, um, as, as you may recognize, this is tied to the zoning that was previously, uh, approved. Uh, this is for the preliminary plat of this lot. As you have in your complete staff report, there's three conditions that were placed on, on this request, uh, uh, for approval. This went before the planning and zoning commission at their July fourteenth meet, meeting for approval of, um, uh, this preliminary plat and was unanimously approved with the conditions in the staff report. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any question for seven A for Mr. Kettner? Staff recommending approval with the three conditions listed on the cover, or staff report, excuse me. Action item, if that's your pleasure. Action item, if that's your pleasure. Motion for approval by Jeff Robinson, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion on seven A before we take a vote? We'll go ahead and vote on it. Indicate yea or nay, please. Passes five zero. We'll shift down to seven B. Consider request for preliminary plat for seven residential lots for three one seven West Owen Street, being a four point two five seven acres out of the P.S. Hall survey, abstract number six five nine, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two one dash zero zero four four. This is your last time.
Yes.
Tonight.
This also, it looks familiar. This is also from the plan development that was approved earlier. This is for the seven lot preliminary plat associated with that. And you have the complete staff report in your packet. Staff recommends approval of the plat subject to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and at the July fourteenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved unanimously with all five present this preliminary plat.
Questions for Mr. Kettner on seven B? Hearing none, entertainer motion, counsel? Motion for approval by Matt Tiscus. Sir, second, second by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Any discussion on seven B before we call for a vote? We'll vote on seven B at this time. Vote when you can, please, on seven B. And that passes five zero. We'll move to number eight on the agenda, which is staff reports. Eight A is a quarterly update regarding the downtown bypass project. Chad, welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and counsel. Chad Marbit, Kappa Projects. So, I'll start off with our current project timeline for phase one and this is a new format. It's what I like to use going forward for our updates. You'll see our current location is indicated by the star. We're still early in data collection and development, but we're on track for construction start early twenty-three. This schedule and other updates will get on the Heritage Square website along with links to the main city webpage and the meetings like we're having tonight. Now, coordination over the past two months has been pretty intense. I do want to acknowledge our teammates at TechSot. They've spent an enormous amount of time with us, weekly meetings, two hours at a time, twenty of their staff at a time. So, their engagement is really, really impressive and I appreciate it. We also met with our city and county historic groups this past quarter. Held a special session with them that I'll show you some photos of. And then, the bulk of our data collection has been done to date, survey and traffic counts. Our environmental team is researching the historical and the environmental aspects of that process we need to go through. The data we collected was put towards traffic modeling and the design, environmental scoping with the state and our team delivered the first draft documents to the state that you see there with the dates they were delivered. On June twenty-fourth, we held a historic commission tour and that was with the help of Development and Neighborhood Services and Transportation and Public Works. We did this rolling tour to get local knowledge and historic assets recorded in our analysis and those features that we see throughout the bypass route. We began the rolling tour at the intersection of Santa Fe and Fort Worth Highway, made our first stop at the star you see there, that's at Austin and Bridge. And so, once we arrived and made sure that everyone was on site, all of our citizens that attended, we reconvene the meeting, we took their input, recorded that with the environmental team and noted those comments and feedback. We then recessed once we were done, moved to the second location at Waco and Bridge, the same format, and then our last stop at Waco and Spring. So, over twenty commission members and citizens attended. That's the county and the city historic commission, both together. And even afterwards, we had some members perform their own research, sending that to us. So, we're able to record this. It's really successful. Looking at future activity, I expect our team in TechSot to work with the same sense of urgency they've done to date. We'll be working towards individual meetings with adjacent property owners, working towards a public meeting and design coordination with public and franchise utilities. We'll get additional survey, historic and environmental data as needed and then TechSot also provides us with their own traffic data analysis that we have to incorporate into our model. Analysis effort will continue with that new traffic data in our modeling, the design and environmental. And then our deliverables will be to get TechSot congruence on public meeting materials, the traffic model, we'll develop our design memorandum with them and then get authorization on the environmental process. So, in the future, I'll come to you in October, January and April with more updates and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions? Very good presentation. We appreciate the updates, sir.
You're welcome.
Let's go to eight B on the agenda, counsel. Quarterly, Weatherford Public Safety Building Construction Update. Lance Arnold, welcome, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Lance Arnold, Director of Public Safety and I am very pleased to provide you with our first update. It was three months and one day ago that all of you met at a ground site, six fourteen Fort Worth Highway and we broke ground on the Weatherford Public Safety Building. And so, since that time, mainly we've got pictures, but we have had a lot of activity going on out there. And so, this is really the first semblance of things that you can visibly see while there was a lot of activity. We have over a hundred and ninety peers on this site and so, a lot of the activity that was going on before really, you know, you couldn't drive by and necessarily see. The concrete structure that you see kind of in the background to the right picture is our storm shelter that we're required to have and also serves as our locker room. And then, this is really just portion A. The main building is broken into part A or area A and area B and so, you're really just looking at area A, but it does provide you with a little semblance of just the size of this facility. And so, this was as they were preparing for our foundation, which actually got poured at two AM this morning. And so, they were putting the void forms in for the foundation and continuing with the storm shelter. One of our trustee Commander Hayes there inspecting all of the rebar to make sure it's his satisfaction. But really, we've been meeting every two weeks with the construction managers, the architects and our internal team and you can really kind of see some of the progress that we have going on. That area that's not, doesn't have the forms is area B and so, they're really working on those kind of separately. But the other really cool thing, you can barely see, it's not a great picture, but in the background there was our steel being delivered on the day that we were there last Thursday. And so, that was an exciting time, too. We also had a pretty good chunk of our parking lot poured. Really, by this time, probably next week, we will have about ninety percent of our parking lot poured. And one of the reasons why we do that, they don't pour all the way up to the building, but it does provide access for emergency vehicles as they start to erect steel and that's the next big thing that we're doing. So, steel erection should start by this week and we, you can see the steel on site there. And then, as I mentioned this morning, they did come pour our foundation and then you can see the steel kind of, in their terms, they shook out the steel and lined them all up into the order that they were gonna start erecting them. And the next big thing that we'll be planning is time for you all to come out and do a beam signing. And so, we'll get that information to you as we continue to work towards that goal. We have had some incredible synergy, I would tell you, between our construction managers, our architects and our internal team, really to work through. We all know and are aware of the challenges with materials and things like that. They've become creative. There's been no portion of this product to this point where we've had any increase in cost, any increase in time delay, even with the significant weather that we've had. And we've come up with some really creative solutions to forecast some of those materials, challenges that might be out there, plan ahead and start working to, working through those. But the quality, the budget and the, probably the biggest news is the time and budget. We're still one hundred percent on schedule and on budget. So, and I'll be available for any questions if you have.
Any questions for Chief Arnold?
No questions, comments, though. Construction as an industry has been in a state that I've never seen it in when it comes to material availability, pricing increase and then Texas weather has been just really odd this year and it's really put a lot of people behind on schedules, it's put a lot of people behind on getting material on time and it's driven cost up on just about most of the projects I've seen. And so far, these guys have done a great job of holding to their commitments on price, availability and timeline. So, pleased to be working with them.
Great company, others. You know, you, when you go through the evolution of a facility like this, you know, there's a process to select your vendors and we weren't involved in that, but y'all went through a long process, a tedious process. And I guess, kind of what you said without saying is, that's when the rubber meets the road. The research, the due diligence you did, the reference checks, when you have materials challenges and weather challenges, that's when you find out that, you know, we picked the right person and all the time we spent doing it really paid off because of the fit's right.
Yeah, that's a great point and, you know, even with the weather, there were actually what would have been really allowable, fifteen weather days last month. And then some things that wouldn't even qualify as a weather delay, like certain concrete for the parking lot or something. If it's over a twenty percent chance, they won't pour, as you all know, Councilmember Cleveland. So, the, but they've been able to say so much on top of their schedule that they're able to bring in and start doing other pieces and other things in lieu of maybe what was scheduled that day, but then get right back on track for what they were supposed to be doing. And so, it's been a great process. Still challenges that lie ahead with the things that you mentioned, but I'm very confident that this is going to be a great process and gonna be something that you all, our citizens and our members of our public safety departments will be extremely proud of when we're done.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
So, just to put it in perspective, so, I mentioned this to the utility board, I just pulled it back up. So, May, we received almost thirteen inches of rain, which is the seventh wettest month in a hundred and thirty years of records. So, all that to say, nothing should slow the project down now.
There is another part of it that goes back to you guys on y'all's side of it. With material shortages that we've had, communication with the owner is one of the hardest things. Oftentimes, you find yourself short on material or a change needs to be made and without that relationship between owner and contractor, you can't solve those problems in a timely manner a lot of times. So, the work y'all are putting in as well to create that relationship helps move past some of those material issues, too. So, good news to you guys.
So, Chief Arnold, just a side question. I'm sure Commander Hayes stayed out there all day helping them tie steel?
Not quite. We were, he was just learning how to walk between the rebar feet. His feet were exactly the right size to fit between the squares.
We appreciate your updates, sir, and we'll see you in three months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds great. We'll get another update in three months, excuse me. Number, item nine on the agenda is future agenda items. Mayor Pro Tim, I know you have one.
Yes, sir. As we're coming into budget season, I would like to invite Judge Pat Dean to give us an update on things that he's doing with the half-cent sales tax collection that goes to the county and how that is benefiting the citizens of Weatherford.
Mr. O'Top, duly noted, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, the ask is for Judge Dean to attend a upcoming city council meeting with an update on how those funds are used to help benefit the citizens of Weatherford. And we'll expect a presentation during his visit. Counsel, any other comments, future agenda items? Mayor Pro Tim, is that restated correctly?
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Top, did you have anything under future agenda items?
I did not.
Item ten on the agenda, citizen comments on non-agenda items. We do have one speaker card, Andrew Caldenbach. Andrew, did I mess that up? Did I get close? Okay, great. Once you get up here and get settled, if we could have your full name and address and then you'll have three minutes, my friend. And thanks for your patience with us.
Oh, no problem. My name is Andrew Caldenbach and I, my address is six nine Crown Road, that's Willow Park, and I've lived there since two thousand and fourteen. I want to thank you, mayor and city council, for your time. I come here to make you aware of the situation in Crown Valley Estates, specifically phase two, section two of that development. A planning and zoning analysis from October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, described that site as lying within an area identified as a permanent open space, place type and a general plan on account of a steep escarpment running through the site and a flood plain to the south and west. Describes that applicants were able to design the site in such a way as to ensure buildable areas could be provided while accounting for the physical constraints. It's these physical constraints that bring me here today. The development in this subdivision, especially this phase of the subdivision, has led to excavation without proper swale, berms, drainage or culverts. I reached out to Jerry Stockton, the land developer, starting in December of two thousand and eighteen. I showed him the erosion that was forming after he removed about six feet of earth from behind my property. He agreed to take temporary measures to control erosion, which he did do until he sold the lot in two thousand and nineteen to McB Homes. Specifically, the lots four, five and six of Block C, phase two, section two, are to the west of my property. Mc... Well, start here. So, I talked to McB Homes when they took it over and told them my concerns. Their lack of transparency led me to contact Nick Benson within the city engineering department and then here recently, Mr. Kettner has reached out to me and indicated interest in the situation. The developer built a wall hastily in two days west of my property and he finished it in the pouring rain on Memorial Day to avoid a, and backfilled it with mud to avoid a stop work order that was given by this city. Now, the builder has made the wall shorter and attempts to avoid city authority. I really only hope to address the current erosion conditions and avoid structural failings as other walls have suffered in that development. I want to ensure that the people behind me, my new neighbors, we have good relationship with each other and I humbly ask you for your guidance and direction addressing this issue.
Mr. Andrew, we appreciate you being here. You did great. Mr. Kettner's involved in the process and will do everything he can to assist you, sir.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and appreciate your patience with us again. Anybody else on citizen comments on non-agenda items from the floor? All right, we'll move to item eleven on the agenda, which is adjournment. Motion by Kevin Cleveland for adjournment, second by Heidi Wilder. We'll vote on it momentarily. Please indicate yea or nay. We are adjourned five zero at seven thirty-six PM. Thank you all for your time.